Let's call the meeting to order. This is the Bella Vista City Council meeting for August 26, 2024. First, we'll have to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Snow. Absent. Okay, councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Wise Mia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is citizen input before limited to three minutes per person. A time limit to address the council on any topic of their choosing. Laura Gentry of 12 Mason Lane in Bella Vista.
Hello. My name is Laura Gentry. I live at 12 Mason Lane, three doors down from Cedar Lodge and 19 Mason Lane, which is also an STR. I would like to firstly thank you to the city council for addressing the weddings and events that were happening on our street and putting a stop to them since they were against the city ordinance. I would also like to thank Doug Fowler, who listened to my concerns and has consistently called me back and created an STR ordinance that has since passed. That being said, a couple of more issues have come to light. Emerald Shores, which is 19 Mason Lane, is being promoted as a six-bedroom home so that the owners can put 16 people in it. When a house was last for sale, it was being sold as a three-bedroom home. I have documentation pre-pubbed. How could a three-bedroom home magically become a six-bedroom home? Who is vending these STRs? Our neighbor that lived in between Emerald Shores and Cedar Lodge was unable to sell this home to anyone once the buyers figured out that they would be living in between two STRs. He said that living between two STRs was isolating since he had no normal neighbors. So he ended up selling to the STR owners. We're assuming that this will also return into an STR, which means that we'll have three STRs in a row housing around 15, 50 people at the end of our street, which was already the most traveled cul-de-sac in Bella Vista, which is going to get easier. In fact, two weeks ago, a full-size coach bus came down the street to drop off and pick up the STR renters. Our dream house that we bought a quiet cul-de-sac now basically has a small hotel at the end of the street, which is also a zoning problem or should be. Are we now allowed to run hotels in the middle of neighborhoods? We worry about the future value of our homes in developing situation. We also have concerns with the lack of enforcement. I have seen posts on Facebook and have talked to several residents who are having problems, and when they call the enforcement officer, they are either ignored or reprimanded for calling. What is the point of heading regulations if you are not going to enforce them? Fayetteville created a paid position for just enforcement. The city used to have enforcement officers, but since the police have taken over, things have gone downhill. If the police don't want to enforce the regulations, the city needs to take back the position and do it themselves. Residents are angry that their quiet neighborhoods are being taken over by STRs. One poor woman has five STRs in her neighborhood. The restrictions need to be updated, and the density of STRs needs to be addressed. In many cities, STRs are actually being banned outright or are limited to rental for a minimum of 30 days, which mitigates the problem of code enforcement and reduces overall violation issues. That would solve all the weekend parties and constant traffic. No one who permanently lives in this community should have to deal with STRs on each side of them. This type of saturation will ruin our neighborhoods and destroy the feeling of community that we have enjoyed for so many years here in Bella Vista. Other permanent residents will be talking to you in the upcoming months with their concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. It's now time for a council reply. Do you have a council would like to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, so after we, we passed the ordinance and, of course, you know, we threw some litigation, then we reworked the ordinance, made it less restrictive, or rest requirements in order to operate. And that one, as we know, it, it, it held, and it's going to be in place from now forward. You know, for, for a period of time after the second ordinance was passed, you know, it held, I experienced really a, a quiet period. You know, I didn't really get any phone calls, but I will say, you know, now they have started again. And it seems to be just certain, certain short-term rentals. I, I do know for a fact that there are so many responsible short-term rental owners that live in Bella Vista. They do not over-occupy their short-term rentals. They're very sensitive to the neighbors, and, you know, they want to keep their occupancy reasonable. And they don't want to keep it reasonable for two reasons. Number one, they don't want to have issues with the neighbors that live around their STR. And secondarily, they don't want their own personal property that they do own or rent out as a short-term rental overrun and abused itself. They want to maintain that property. And I know for a fact that there are short-term rental owners that actually are in support, not just of our city ordinance, but the first one as well. And, and the feedback was, it, it, they felt like it leveled the playing field because, you know, they're limiting theirs to four or six people per the number of bedrooms that they have, and they think that that's reasonable, and that's where they should be, where another, like an example like this, where somebody may be taking advantage of a situation, and it's actually a three-bedroom home, but they're advertising it for six, and they're putting, putting whatever, you know, 12, 14, or maybe even 16 people in it. But anyway, short-term renters, there are some that say, yeah, just level, level the playing field for us if we, if we could do that. So they were actually very supportive, and they didn't have really a lot of issues with the other requirements that were put in play with, with the first one that passed. So, you know, I hear your concerns, and we'll continue to address them, and hopefully, you know, we can come to some resolution and quiet this issue down.
Larry.
Thank you, Ms. Tendrick, for coming forward. I know we've talked over the last year or so, several times on the phone, about the issue of annoying nature, and I understand that. I think one of the, one of the challenges probably has to do with septic tank themselves being regulated and controlled by a state agency, and the city being another agency which deals with the building code, and I don't know that we enforce the sewage on-site disposal regulations. Do we, Mr. Tapp, can we enforce the on-site regulations for wastewater? We don't. That's all inspected, all inspected and permitted and everything by ADEQ through our Public Health Service, actually. So all we do is, is receive the notice that says it's certified for so many better house on that facility, and you approve the plans. So it's, it's a little difficult, and, and now what's happening is that even builders, we understand, are building two-bedroom houses with offices and other things, and advertising that they have more bedrooms, which is a problem. I don't know legally, in terms of telling whether we have any authority to challenge those or...
Authority to challenge what exactly?
Selling a house with more bedrooms than the capacity of the septic system, advertising...
You don't have an ordinance in place that addresses any of that right now.
Would we need an ordinance specifically for that?
Order to have a rule, you have to have a law. I would say, yes, you would need to have an ordinance to, to, if we're talking about regulating the real estate business, in other words, regulating how properties are listed versus how they exist, that, in other words, is it really a three-bedroom sort of situation? Is that the sort of situation you're talking about, or are you talking about more of the septic science issues?
Septic as it relates to how the house is represented or presented?
Well, we have broad police power, which we could, we could, I mean, as I sit here, I can't tell you that we absolutely couldn't. There's probably, there are probably things we could do, given the right ordinance and the right justification for it.
So, so what you're telling us is that would the ordinance we currently have, we are unable to file as a, as a violation of our code?
I don't know of anything that you've adopted to this point that would make what you just discussed something that violates the code.
Need something more specific in relation to how it's represented on a sale?
It just depends on what sort of law you want to adopt.
Jim Wise, Dan.
When you noticed the overload at these houses, have you called into the police station?
Uh, yes.
Okay, did you get anybody come out to talk to you or talk to them and tell them the error of their waste?
They said that, that I have to call between the hours of midnight and six for the parking situation.
Yeah, I'm worried about, you know, you get only supposed to have five or six, and this, you know, the ordinance covers that. So if you're saying that, you know, it's way over that number, and then you call and complain, well, that would be a violation of the ordinance, and if they're not taking care of you, then I can see why you'd be frustrated.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
So it would be a parking issue, is what you're suggesting, Mr. White?
No, I'm looking at, they're only supposed to have so many people in a house, and they got three times as many. That's a violation of the ordinance. If she calls and said, you know, this house is only supposed to have three bedrooms, and only supposed to have so many people, and all of a sudden, we've overloaded that by the ordinance, we're not doing anything. Not doing anything. You know, at least you can go to the house and you say, hey folks, it's the error of your ways. You know, you either end it, this is it, or we'll come back and, you know, issue you a citation or something, or whatever. But we don't seem to be doing anything. While we're talking a period, as well, we'll get on to it. Well, she's called and not gotten any satisfaction. Period. It's got nothing to do with septic, it's got nothing to do with parking. They violated the ordinance, and we patched it. So many people per bedroom, legal bedroom.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that discussion. The next item is action of the minutes, approve all the minutes from July 22, 2024. Is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
It was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wise Mia.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. We have several reports on the schedule for tonight. Before we get into those, I did want to mention that the city put out a press release this afternoon about our cyber incident, and I'm just going to mention a couple thing, or a few things that were in the press release. So city offices will reopen to the public on Tuesday. Throughout the incident, it started a week ago, Sunday, so it would be the 18th. The police and fire and streets were able to, to continue to operate the entire time. They had some of the technological things they usually have, weren't operating, but they were able to operate. The threat has been contained, and we, we shut down voluntarily, shut the system down after a cyber threat was detected. It was not shut down by someone else. City Hall and CDS and the library worked from home during the entire time last week, and people have gotten fairly efficient, in fact, because of COVID. They had a lot of practice working at home. There was not, we did want to mention a few things. We did not pay any ransomware. We do have cyber insurance with our municipal league. There is no negative financial repercussions to the city, and I have to give a shout out to a couple people. Our IT department worked very hard. Eventually, we're 24/7 this entire time, up to now. Ever since the incident occurred, you know, they take turns sleeping and working, and they had outside consultants helping them. And the other thing was that I found very gratifying, a number of cities sent us IT people to work with us. And I hope I don't leave anybody out. It was Portsmouth, Fayetteville, Springdale, and Benton and Washington County. So that's without charge. And the effect that had was of making the recovery faster, because they're going through every computer one at a time, and the great majority were not affected in any way, but it's a very slow, laborious process, I guess I would say, to go through everything, because they have to be so careful. And I was really gratified by the attitude of, which I've observed in the past in North West Arkansas, the attitude of the different cities, you know, working together and everything. A lot of times you'll see that guy help with the fire, fireworks and things like that, so it's great to see. So that's all I want to say about that. I knew people were interested in it. So on the schedule, we have the monthly financial report, and this is for the period that June 30, 2024. And I just wanted to mention a few things about it. The county sales tax was slightly down from the same period last year. This is year-to-date. Yeah, you might want to go to page 31 and be good, show us the revenue. This was year-to-date through June 30. County sales tax was down, which is very unusual. Our recent experience is is normally up eight, eight percent, sometimes 10 percent. I also have noticed in the press that state revenues have been down, and the other local city revenues around us have been down recently. Point being that it appears just a change of some sort in the economy. I think the high interest rates have finally had an effect on things. The city of Bella Vista sales tax was up a little bit over 6%. So we're kind of an outlier. Of course, we're working off a smaller base than the county and, and other people. Our overall operating revenue was up 2.1% year-to-date. So it's up, but just a little bit. It's not up like we're used to. Our operating expenses are also up, but we are $525,000 below budget. That's through June 30. So we're trying to keep the expenses down. Recent inflation readings nationally are below 3%. I think the economy is definitely cooling, and of course, we have that national news, the job creation from March 2023 to March 2024 was actually 881,000 jobs less than previously reported. It's like 68,000 jobs a month. That's a, that's a big correction. And the latest job report's weaker. So my conclusion is that we're going to have to have caution in regard to raises for 2025, we just start to work on the budget now. And I, I feel like there'll be very little new hiring in 2025. You know, I gave a little presentation last week, and, and, you know, it just makes you realize you have to really watch your expenses, and in periods, at least for the short term, you know, we're watching it month by month, but for the short term, at least, that change in the county's sales tax is, is notable. So that's the financial report. Having said that, there's still plenty of things to be optimistic about. You know, we have a new bakery and coffee shop on the west side, Table Palm, if I can attempt French. Rosita's has opened up, an old American Legion, and BB65 is going to open up in early September. So we do have some good things going on, and I feel like we are going to grow our city sales tax still. So that's the total financial report, and the street department, Karen Hunt and Dan Downing have agreed to give a little department report. This is separate apart from what they're presenting later on. The floor is yours.
Hi, good afternoon. Most of you here are, you know, we are the council and our peers, but for the residents of Bella Vista, my name is Karen Hunt. I have been with the city of Bella Vista for 12 years now. All 12 years have been with our street department. I've always had a passion for construction, and this was a natural move for me. I started off with an underground utility company, went to a hot mix asphalt paving company, and did some job site safety at our world famous Crystal Bridges Museum. I've been built all of this under construction. While working for the city, I obtained my associate's degree in accounting and an associate in business management to back up my years of office experience and have some credentials on paper for you guys. I've been really blessed in this position to have a great person to help handle the shift, and that's Dan Downing, our assistant superintendent.
So I'm Dan Downing, assistant superintendent, not everybody up here. So the city knows I bring 20, I'm on my 23rd year of dealing this. March will be 10 years with the city of Bella Vista. Prior to that, I did 14 years with Los Angeles County Public Works, seven of which is with road department, and the other seven was with flood control. So I've got pretty good understanding of everything to do with working for municipalities and specifically street department.
So our street department, we started in 2012. And this department was developed by Mike Fuddin, our first street superintendent, and at that time, his goal was really to establish a solid street department to move forward in the city. He was up for the challenge and began by securing equipment and personnel. I was lucky enough to get hired in as the first admin for the street department, so I was present for all the makings and happenings throughout the course of my 12 years here and 12 years of the Bella Vista street department. We started off really small in a FEMA trailer over on Canyon Drive, and we had a little setback in March of 2015 when our facility caught a fire, and we faced a second challenge, and we rose to cause, and we reestablished ourselves with the land acquisition. Mike oversaw the building, our street facility next door. We got to move in there in 2016, so we've been there for eight years now, and it's state of the art. He thought of everything. He also established and oversaw the building of an east side salt and sand storage where we could store our materials to better respond to the residents. And I don't know exactly how much it holds, but it is a very large facility that allows us rapid response around the east side. We also have one here at our street department next door. Two years ago, Mike decided he was going to retire, and in doing so, he went through several interviews and ultimately decided to recommend myself and Dan to take over leadership jointly. And since he's handed over the reins, in April of 2023, we were able to convert the old fire station number three into our west side salt and sand building, which allows us to respond, rapid responses to our west side residents in the event of inclement weather. We also were able to oversee the Wash Bay project, which was a long time coming. The first mention was seven years ago, and it's reached completion. I am happy to say that has been usage from all city departments at the facility. It's been a positive response, and it is greatly appreciated by our mechanics, who care deeply about our equipment and city assets. And a few things that our street department is responsible for, it's, we're called street department, but it is citywide maintenance. We do mowing and tree trimming, potholes, patching, drainage, it's going to start to run on, signs, snow removal, fleet maintenance. We have three mechanics. We do routine vehicle maintenance, heavy equipment repairs, fabrication. We manage the street permits, which would be like our utility cuts, work cuts for utilities, water sewer, and sometimes contractors. We also oversee our resurfacing contracts, which are hot mix and slurry seal. So we do stay very busy in our department throughout the year. Dan and I have a vision for our street department moving forward with Bella Vista developing and growing as rapidly as it is, and with he and I in a partnership, we bring a lot of new perspectives and fresh ideas to the table. We discuss them amongst ourselves, but another resource we use is we have a street committee, which is comprised of a city council member, Wendy Hees, thank you for joining, and our street department leadership, and also residents of Bella Vista. Lately, we've been reviewing all of our prior procedures and policies and implementing any changes that we see might better fit this new direction that the city's going. We have actually addressed one, and we are doing a restructuring of our resurfacing program and the strategy on how we address the roads in Bella Vista. We also plan to expand on our mowing crew and develop a full-time tree crew eventually as we build our department out.
I'll tip over here, kind of give you guys a rundown of where we're at here today with things. First, I want everybody to notice we brought in the street map in the little red area like where we're sitting tonight. like where we're sitting tonight. So, you can kind of get the scale of the city. Bella Vista is over five hundred and fifty miles of streets. And what that equates to is over twenty-seven hundred individual streets. So, it's, it's a pretty well-spread out city. Everybody likes to think of Bella Vista as this little community, but when it comes to taking care of her, she is big. Best point we manage that is we break the city down into eight zones. We categorize it by east, central, and west, and then within those, they're broke down. We've got eight different zones. That helps with scheduling our workload day-to-day, that helps with our snow removal, and that's kind of how we attack it. So, with that, our department staff is twenty-eight positions. We've got Karen, myself, in management, we have one office administrative assistant, we have one field operations spec that manages the permits, our safety program, oversees contractors, and then we have our three mechanics. So, you take that off the twenty-eight, that leaves twenty-one positions for this entire workload. Way we have that broke down is three crews of seven. And then from there, when we get into these summer months, mowing, resurfacing, those get broken even smaller because other guys have to go do other things. So, it's a pretty big task for these guys to take on. Year-to-date, we started this year with two hundred and forty-five streets receiving varying degree of freezing thigh damage. We attacked those right away. We have to break off to take on our resurfacing program. We're starting to wrap that up, so we'll get back to those. Year-to-date, we have completed and closed over seven hundred citizen request work orders. Anything from tree trimming to potholes to line of sight issues, basically any one of those things Karen listed that we take on. We have prepped two hundred and fifty-one streets for this year's resurfacing, which includes subgrade repairs, level ups, dirt patching, drainage work, cover replacements, tree trimming, all these things that we need to take care of before the resurfacing is done to help prolong the work that's being done. The overlay contract is just wrapped up. We ended up with fifty, fifty-three streets that were paved with hot mix asphalt for a total of fifteen point six miles. And of those, twenty-three of them were zipped with the zipper that actually allows us to reclaim those materials into the subgrade and reduce the amount of base materials needed. And because of that, we're estimating to have saved about forty thousand dollars. Going along those numbers to finalize and potentially add that in to get more roads The slurry contract is expected to start the week of September 3rd, next week. We currently have one hundred and ninety-eight streets scheduled for a total of thirty-one miles. So, with all those numbers being said, the overlay and slurry contract combined total is forty-six point six miles of the five hundred and fifty plus within the city. What that equates to is eight percent. So, that's, that's how big the city is. That's why we're on this rapid rotation of checking streets every year and assessing each one because the balance isn't fair to what needs to be done. In addition, we'll just hit with the severe weather event. We have a large task at hand, remove all the storm debris. At this point, I have physically driven and identified over four hundred streets which require degree removal. So, that's kind of where we're at. It's a, it's a busy life at the street department, but we take on the challenge. Karen and I specifically have a great passion for this, never shy away from the challenges. And with that, I'd like to take a moment and recognize our department staff. I read you those numbers. It's not a lot for what we take on and they show up every day, not afraid of what the day holds, and we get it done. Street department in a nutshell.
I had a quick question. So, so our staff positions, there's twenty-eight total staff members and twenty-one being like the work crews that
Yeah, twenty-eight total. So, you removed the support staff and it's twenty-one provided, there's nobody out of city, there's nobody on vacation.
How does that compare to the other cities around us who have way less streets to manage?
In comparisons that I've done with other cities, talking to other superintendents, they've got a fraction of the road mileage and pretty much the same amount of staff. So, it's, it's a big challenge, but we show up every day, take it on.
Have we ever been close to forty, what'd you say, forty-six miles? Have we ever been close to that historically in the past few years? I thought we were only getting, I don't even know if I would say all the last season only, but like fifteen or fifteen miles resurfaced.
Well, not with slurry. I don't know if we've done that many, but we've gotten through about forty now.
The last couple of years, we've been kind of getting that same ballpark of total mileage, but what has changed this year is we gained actually almost six miles of actual asphalt paving versus just a reseal and slurry. So, we gained in our overall capital improvement to our roads.
And then I know you told me this beginning of the year, but how many tickets do we have the last year of 2023? I know you really, this is an incredible number.
The citizens' requests, we ended the year with over fourteen hundred.
That's crazy.
So, thank you guys and Mayor Flynn, thanks for taking the opportunity to showcase. So, the streets department, and I just wanted to mention the IT as well, because these are two departments that don't get a lot of visibility, right? You just don't. And particularly the street department, well, actually our other departments can as well. But, you know, you, you don't get a lot of credit for it, you do, but you get a lot of angst sometimes, right? Because whenever the phone rings, it's typically somebody that has an issue and has been festering for a little while and they're a little upset. But you guys are fantastic about your list and, you know, I'm very close to you guys, right? And I, I have a high level of confidence in what you do. I mean, just like you said, you show up every day and you take it on, and I really commend you for that. So, yeah, it's great you guys could, could kind of show yourself today. That's awesome. But, and then on the IT department, Mayor, I think one thing, you mentioned a lot of things, but one of the reasons we didn't really have the issues we could have had with the cyber attack is because the protocols were put in place by John and his, his psyche. I apologize.
City roads.
Pardon me?
City roads.
City, yeah. But, yeah, the protocols, if it was caught early on, or else it could have really gotten out of control and really shut us down, we maybe would have been in a hostage situation. And I know you stated that you wouldn't pay the money if we didn't get there. But anyway, we didn't get all the way locked down and it could have happened very easily. So, you know, those two guys, I don't really commend them as well along with you. So, it's great, it's great seeing you guys showcase a little bit and talk about what you did because it's said that a long time, it does really get the notice that it's shit. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to make the presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I do have one question. I can't see the map, which is fine, but the eight zones that you guys have identified for the city, is that published on the city website? Or, I mean, is this map on the city site?
I'm not sure if the map itself is on there. We have been using this tool for a very long time. When, when we first took over the street department, it was east and west from Highway 71, and we quickly realized to be efficient, that was not going to be the strategy. So, we did east, central, west, and that was still a big fight to two. If you were on the east side, how do we categorize them? So, we did take the map with mileage, try to get each zone plus or minus the same amount of mileage within there so that we can more rapidly respond and people be more efficient with our time anytime we get requests. And snow removal, we assigned a big truck and a small truck to each zone, and they travel that whole zone, every single street.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is if we have eight zones and if those are identified and they're, and they're
They're established, yes.
Yeah. So, I guess to my point is if we have those zones, because typically like if we get into a storm situation or like a debris situation, you know, like the ice storms or, you know, pickup and removal of trees like what we're in right now. First question I get asked is, well, how, when are they coming through my neighborhood? So, I guess what I'm getting at is, is if we could publish, like, do you guys try to tackle a zone a week? I mean, I know it's gonna depend on how
Right, well, we prioritize as much as we can, like, for instance, during our snow removal, we have a medical priority list and then we have to go mains first, then sides. In this storm that we just had, the thunderstorms on Friday, we could go Friday on the sixteenth, it mainly hit the west side. And so, we basically had to take all hands on deck and move them all to the west side.
Well, what I, what I was thinking was that if we could have like an announcement, working in zone four, you know, like, it doesn't have to say like until four
Right, we could, we could work on that with Cassie and pushing out some sort of notification.
But just, I mean, for people that actually follow the city website and, you know, and like Facebook people, you know, once word of mouth gets out that they're working in my zone today, I mean, if people are kind of aware of what zone they're in, or if they can see this map, and if, and if we were to say, you don't have to give a timeline
Right, right. Usually, out of those three crews of seven, one's assigned to west, one's assigned to central, one's assigned to east. So, it's, we're always working in all three zones as much as possible with that crew. Sometimes we have to break up the crews and it may be irregular for a little bit, but overall, we have a crew per zone is our setup.
Okay.
Just a
Oh, Larry? I guess I'd like to thank you again for the quality of job that you've done for us. I think we're honored to have two good leaders, two responsible years, and your staff as well, I guess, to recognize that. I know over the last couple of years, the winter, streets have been almost as good as what I've experienced in Wisconsin and I was tour commanders up there. But in getting out, getting people out and available from Bella Vista to go wherever they needed to go, this, this group has been phenomenal, I think, this past winter. Storm damage, I don't know that too many people were handicapped. I think as I, as Ms. Hunt explained, when I spoke with her about the cleanup process, she said we called everybody out, that even she couldn't get out of her driveway because of a tree down until it got removed. And many of them couldn't get to work because they were blocked off. So, but even then, they showed up as soon as possible and started the clearing process for us in Bella Vista.
Yes, we'll talk about that when the agenda item comes up. I have a little more to say on that as well.
You're primus for the next group.
Yes, yes, the suspense is there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, the next one is Chief Sims, who's gonna give us an update on the construction of Fire Station Number One and City Hall and the fire offices.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor, appreciate you asking me to come speak about it. It'll be, I'll be pretty brief. I'll start a few things to say about it. I do want to, I do want to take one minute to say, it's nothing like being out in the middle of the night, working, working, trying to get things clear, and you see the street department showing up. So, I do say thank you so much for the street department. I see them at work, they do an excellent job. They did an excellent job the other night. It's, it's just a blessing to see them like show up. They've got all the stuff they need, they can help them out on the face. So, Karen and Dan, thank you so much for that. I would like to say that. Can you believe it's been about a year? It's been a year since I was standing in front of council asking for money to do demo of the new two-story or two-story renovation project at the old former police station. We started that project, it's actually in August of that, of '23, I come and ask for the demo, and it took a little, about a month or so to get actually started with the project. When I come to the council for guaranteed maximum price to renovate that two-story project for two million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Currently, right now, we spent two million on that project and we're about finished with it. That, that project is about done. Currently, right now, my current work being done on that project is cabinets are being installed with the countertops, and then along comes the back comes the plumbing fixtures, then the flooring, which I'm hoping all, the countertops should be done hopefully this week with the plumbing started, the fixtures going into the plumbing, the bathrooms. There's a total of six bathrooms with four of them being bathed and showers. So, the plumbing, once they put the plumbing in, then they can start putting the floor in. Once they get the floor in, then we're basically on that downhill slide on actually moving into that, that project. And we're hoping to have that, that move-in date around the first part of October, maybe sooner, but we're, we're shooting for the first part of October to be actually moving the fire, fire personnel from their current living conditions over to the new, new building with that, which will allow a little bit of time to get some stuff done before CDS moves into the old fire station, back, back part of the fire station portion of it. Currently, we have some parking spaces that have been done to accommodate that move. So, there's one thing we was looking at is how can we release some of the parking because there is some issue with parking with construction and stuff going on with parking in front of City Hall and out next in front of the fire department. So, we actually had, had several of the spaces in the back completed, the concrete poured and so forth. So, when, when the personnel move in on fireside, they can move straight in to, they can just pull around and do the switch out there, and also a little bit of room for Tony Kell back there and Mayor Flynn. We'll take care of y'all. I was gonna say, I heard that, I heard that request from him, so we're working on that, JK, so, you know. So, we are, we are looking at that, but like I said, we're looking at that first part of October, hopefully sooner, moving into that current space. So, as of right now, it looks like we're, we're remaining currently, because some of this project here, the two million dollars we spent so far, actually includes some of phase two as well because of how we had to, how we had to structure it out. So, we're looking like we're gonna be currently under budget for that particular first phase of the project, so. Right now, have you been down there lately? Have you looked? Have you drove by? Have you seen the construction going on? You see what's going on right now? The, the red iron, or actually the gray iron and steel right now is, as of today, is completed. And we're on track to have the floor, the second floor cord for the new two-story building, have the second floor cord this week. The trusses should be around them this week, I've been told. Right, so, right, so about three weeks ahead of schedule on that particular portion of the building. The red iron, the red iron was supposed to take around a month, but they got it done in a little over a week. They brought in extra personnel to help get that project back on track. So, with that, the roof, hopefully, I've been told that hopefully by the second week of September, we should have a roof on, on that building, and then at the same time, exterior walls going up. And then by October 1st, around there, we should start putting the interior walls in the second, second story for admin and fire admin, or city admin. The, of course, exterior, once they start doing that, it should go pretty quick. So, that's kind of where we're at right now currently. And then when that gets all going and that, that renovation and that new two-story will kind of flow together, start coming together because we'll be opening that space up between the two buildings. So, that's where we're currently at with that project. Are there any questions?
Chief, just out of curiosity, that's a nice skeleton that's out there for your new building. The skeleton is out there.
That's right.
Yeah. Looks hardened, looks certain. But the question that I have is that you said about October sometime, they would have the old police station finished out so it can be occupied.
That's kind of what we're looking at first.
So, at that time, then you'll move your staff out of the quarters that you're using now adjacent to the, to the fire trucks, so it's
So, but yeah, the fire personnel, they use that, is there not available? We'll move over to the two-stores renovation.
Then what happens then is that portion where they're currently using his offices and staff quarters, will that be torn down and the administrative building go up next?
So right now, currently what's going to happen is CBS and planning are going to move to the back part of the fire station. So they're going to occupy the back part of the fire station until we get the old city hall renovated.
So is there room for them to move over there? Because I'm assuming that relates to our lease at the Village Center Plaza over here.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, right, yeah. The lease ends November 30th.
So we're going to have to put them someplace, either in a tent or in trailers or...
Well, that's kind of, well, it all depends on, I guess it's up to the mayor when they move, but we should be hopefully out of that space and hopefully have some of that in the form of mid-October, I would think.
So we have enough space over there for, how's the DPW staff? Or not DPW, DPS?
Yeah.
Yeah, Planner Robertson put together a very nice plan on how that's going to lay out, the engineering, the planning department, the permitting office. Actually, permitting office is going over to the front of City Hall and they're going to operate from out of the front of City Hall with permitting. And then the rest of them are coming over with engineering, rest of CBS, the trail coordinator, and then all the planning is all coming over to the back part of the fire station.
Chief, can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
We've talked about, and I think it might be of interest, the unending department, Arkansas Department of Transportation, Highway 340 Bridge Project that is affected, they're doing some stuff alongside our property there. Could you talk about how that's going to fold in, what work we've had to do to coordinate with them on that entry and all that stuff?
Yeah, it's an interesting question, but there's a lot of work to be done there, which you're kind of seeing now. It's kind of misleading and a perception is kind of like, is that the way that's going to look right there? Had one of the city staff say, you realize you're only, you're only going to have like 24 foot of driveway? I'm like, oh, no, 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 that's not right. Well, what they're doing is in front of City Hall, coming off where the new bridge is, they're putting in a sidewalk and part of the sidewalk's done, but right in front of the fire station, they're having to build that sidewalk, part of it's built, which it has about a, what, a foot and a half, probably two foot, two foot drop off right there that eventually is going to have asphalt right there temporarily, so we can get our vehicles out. They'll move that driveway over and then they'll finish the rest of that sidewalk. So we're going to have about 45 to close to 50-foot driveway entrance, not that 24, 25-foot you have right now. So it makes it very, very difficult to get it out. But we've been working with the engineers of ESS with that project, crafting a tool. Actually, it's one that's kind of overseeing that on our side and then working with ESS on trying to make that work where we can get in and out. But it's kind of, it's a major event, it's a major situation.
I think Wendy answered a big question. Go ahead.
And so Chief, thank you for letting me tour it about a month and a half ago.
Yes, and thank you for coming up.
If you haven't, council members, you need to go tour. I'm sure it's been more beautiful right now than it was. But thank you for taking the time to ensure that your crew, your staff had the space to, the wind down space. Because it is incredibly hard work and things that they see are hard, I think what they do are hard. And to have that space where they can just rest and relax and they can get away mentally from that, the challenges.
That's kind of what we're thinking about, you know, because there is a lot of stuff that builds up on. If you're a police officer or firefighter, EMS work and things like that are very difficult. They're very stressful and to have a place like that for them to go and just kind of, not on the outside on the balcony, but inside there to relieve some frustration or they need to or just sit back and relax, it's very important nowadays.
Thank you for giving that explanation. Sign that.
And thanks for coming up.
Absolutely.
Anybody who's come up, come by and...
I want to see you again.
Stop by and see me. Oh, it's changed since you've been here.
I'm so excited.
It's all changed, even the old stairwells. When you were there, the stairwells haven't been done yet. They're about done now, so.
Great.
I just had a quick question. Is this project wraps up? I don't know if we talked about it as far as personnel. Is the personnel going to increase firemen or fire personnel staff?
So at that particular station?
Yeah.
No, that station, as of right now, that station will stay at seven personnel, like it is right now.
Okay, but personnel as a whole, how's the fire department doing? I know that we've, I know we've added salary for the police and then community development services, et cetera, and we've never scratched the surface on the fire department. I don't know. I was just curious.
Just like every, every, every department, the other fire department needs staff. I asked, I actually asked for staff in this year's budget. Just like everybody else, we have to take it out, we're going to revisit it. I was told in April that if we weren't going to hire the firefighters, I asked for it, so. But I am going to ask for more personnel in the 25 budget, as Mayor says. So I'm like, we're not going to hire personnel too, so I don't know.
Okay, well...
But I'm just like everybody else, everybody needs staffing. We need staffing. Our calls are up. I got to make sure that I have personnel here in the city to make sure that we're available for the next call, so. Just like every other.
Well, when you say the calls are up, I mean, it's had, are we statistically higher at this time of year? Or is it just, is it ramping up? Is this obviously...
It's ramping up.
Okay, and it's staying?
I mean, yeah, and staying.
Yeah, every year it's been increasing.
Yeah, it has been.
Yeah, it's just...
Well, that's what I mean, kind of to the presentation and nuggets, you know, as far as finances go for the city. And that's, I just, I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't get left out in the cold. I know that we're kind of...
Well, I mean, I got to do what I have to do in those positions. I mean, I've got to fill those positions. I can't leave, I can't leave, you know, below minimum staffings or we wouldn't have anybody going on the next call. So I have to make, I have to make sure that I'm doing that the best way I can. And I'm telling you right now, I'm using overtime to do that, so.
Okay, all right.
Larry?
I think what we're talking about here is maybe a differential between additional new employee hires versus filling authorized positions. And what we're talking about is filling vacancies, I'm sure if you were.
Well, no, it's not necessarily filling vacancies.
You're looking for additional people.
That's correct.
Because of additional.
That's right. And the mayor and I have had conversations about that.
And the reality will be as, with the apparent suffering of the economy, it's a little difficult to project in our experience. I think what we've seen in the sales tax income for four neighboring communities around here, including Fort Smith, I think is one, three around here, one at Fort Smith, which they've seen a deep plan in their sales tax revenue city-wise. So that has a caution out there, it's a caution light. Whether we see a slowdown in our needs for workload or not by reduced building and other demands is one side of it, but the other side of it is that we'll probably see some slowing regardless which way the election goes and we may, we may end up running short with staff for a while.
Well, I'll do the best I can to make sure the citizens are safe.
You need to submit what your beliefs are, what you need.
My personnel are safe.
I want to be clear too, that as far as revenue versus payroll operating and benefits, we're pretty good shape. Is the capital project overlay that you've got for the next, what, or through 2027, it's like $24 million? It's just like your own budget, right? You got to make a decision, you know, you want to spend it on... And you know what, there's the mayor and yourself and Chief Graves and Karen, they all make those decisions, right? And it could simply be maybe we shift some of our view or our spin, you know, away from some of the capital projects. But they should go because we need to have capital. And so whenever I did my projection forward, it was all inclusive of everything, right, that's out there right now. Not saying that we have to spend it and we've got some options as far as financing, right? The fire department, maybe we're considering, you know, extending the bond over to the voters. So we have some options. It's just if everything stays status quo, we spend all of our capital expenditure, you know, capital budget, that's where we're kind of looking like, this could get a little, a little close, you know, by the time we get into 2027, so.
Yeah.
It isn't like the city doesn't have any money to do. We just got to decide how we want to spend it.
Yeah, just keep in mind, we have two more phases.
Yeah.
So those are things we're going to be having to talk about with this budget cycle. And of course, we already got, where we look at the financing, we got to kind of set the stone going back two months, I think, of what we've already spent, that we can kind of recoup some of that money back that we borrowed. But we still have two phases. You know, this phase is going to be broken out in, I'd say, probably next year and a half or two years. So with one of the, with part of that phase, half of that phase of phase three is going to have to be, it's going to be in 25 something or 25 something. What do we decide to do?
You know, what Larry was asking about hiring, one thing I've been gratified about is when we have openings at police and fire, we've been getting good quality people, so.
Yeah, that's been...
There's a lot of people wound up here.
I was going to say, that's been a long time coming, that we started getting some good quality personnel. Right now, we have all positions hired. Now, we got one that hadn't started yet, but they're all hired on departmental side right now, so. But yeah, we've got some good, very good quality candidates that have come to work with all this stuff, which is good.
And while we're on the subject of personnel, one thing I give Karen and Dan credit for that's under the radar for most people is the turnover on streets is having to be quite low. Not only that, people are working hard, but they like to hear it this day, so that's a good thing.
So what does that have to do with the average class?
It's always good. They do make some calls.
Yes.
Work came in with them every day. Matter of fact, that map up there, we have one in our fire station and we use it a lot.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for that summary. Appreciate it.
Well, thanks for having me. Come by and see.
So I had a couple of reports since we didn't have that much to pass, but we still have some stuff we have to talk about, so under due business, I have. Well, first, I need to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Agreed. Second.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll read the new business. Waiving the requirement of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for storm debris disposal services in an amount not to exceed $150,000 based on best price availability and amending the 2024 city budget. Karen, did you give us a brief summary of that?
This request is in regards to the recent storm we previously discussed on August 16th. There were several trees down and power lines and mainly, primarily hit the west side of town with some places in the central being affected as well. About 8:30 PM, we received our first call out of the street department and we sent in six employees. And by 9:00 PM, we called and said, rally the troops. And some employees, like Will said, had to cut their way out of their own homes to be able to come into work. Our primary focus at that point was just to cut halfway through, maybe not the whole road, but make sure people can get in and out. And they worked tirelessly on that until about 4:00 or 5:00 AM. And we started feeling confident. We had tackled most of the blocked streets, but fatigue was setting in and Fire Chief Sims volunteered that his crew can take the reins for a while and give our guys some much needed reprieve. The police department also participated in this. Their dispatch was overwhelmed as our phones were down. And they also had police personnel to pick up chainsaws to assist whenever needed and wherever needed throughout the city. I feel like this is a good example of all of our departments coming together just to serve our cities in the best capacity that we can. A shout out I would like to give this to Carol Electric, who was just coming off of dealing with tornadoes in Decatur and Fentonville and Rogers, and they showed up and they were dealing with power lines down here in Bella Vista as well. So this truly was a group effort. We've now reached the point where we're doing the cleanup. We started today. And like Dan had said, we've identified over 400 streets that need cleanup. We are currently working to secure contracts that this money is for, for a grinding service to dispose of the debris. We're asking for the waiver of competitive bidding so we can get this done sooner rather than later. The POA is offering us a place where we could stage that in the term until that contract is secured. I do know this $150,000 sounds like a lot when we're talking about budgets. That's just the cap. We're not expecting to reach that cap, but we wanted to secure the funding so that we could complete the task at hand. I think that's all I got on this one. I am recommending a move that I can third and final reading because of coordinates. Is there any questions? I think we're all pretty well informed about this storm.
I didn't, if I may just real quick, I didn't, I forgot to say thanks. You guys were, my street is totally blocked. And I don't know what time you guys came to my street, but it was like 2 o'clock in the morning and see a huge tree and 5 o'clock in the morning it was gone. So excellent job, you know, nothing but accolades for everybody in the street department, fire department, police, everybody. Everybody did so great, really. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to spin the rules in week third and final.
Sure. That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wills. Roll call vote on the motion move to third is final.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll read it for third and final. Waiving the requirement of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for storm debris removal, storm debris disposal services in an amount not to exceed $150,000 based on best price availability and amending the 2024 city budget.
Roll to your first second.
Who is Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Hansel? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you for that. I'll read the announcements. Next city council work session, 5:30 PM, Monday, September 16th, at Bella Vista Police Training Room. Next city council regular meeting, 6:00 PM, Monday, September 23rd, at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission work session, 4:30 PM, Thursday, August 29, 2024, at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission regular meeting, 4:30 PM, Monday, September 9, 2024, at Bella Vista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, September 10th, if necessary, at Fire Station Number Four, Conference Room, 1639, Forest Hills Boulevard. So if there's not anything else, Greg Hansel?
May I ask one thing? Kind of looking through the agenda, I mean, we hear from every department kind of throughout the city, except the library. I don't know if they have much to add, but can we kind of get them in a rotation to where, like, they just seem to be forgotten? And I think if we, if we heard from them every quarter, every other month, you know, kind of keep them relevant and not forgotten, I would be curious to see what's going on at the library.
Yeah, I think it would be a bad idea to have a presentation at the library. It's a good idea.
It's just like an unfair involved. If you don't know he's there, he's doing a good job.
I know.
I didn't say they couldn't come, but that's why you're not hearing from them, because they're doing a bang on job.
Oh, yeah, they do.
They're doing a visual.
Yeah. Okay. If there's nothing else, then we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.